I'm gonna bring the Dunbarren Board of Select and Meeting to order Thursday, July 23rd, 2020. And the first order of business is to approve the regular meeting minutes from July 9.
I'll look at them.
I do not believe there were any amendments on this.
Do you have a good chance to read it?
No, they look, they look fine to me.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 9.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, let's get approved. We'll sign those when we get them in. And just for the record, I want to state that this meeting is being recorded. And we're gonna have that also available on the Dunbarren website under the Board of Select the Uncut Meeting Minutes. So that's available on YouTube as well as there. And we appreciate those being taped. We are now gonna open it up for public comment. We're waiting for those minutes. Nothing? Okay. We only have one person in here, so that was pretty easy to do. I go right to town business here. Mike, we have a donation. Do you wanna go through that?
And then we should have, we have a donation of $350 from the Blue Ribbon property LLC for these across Dunbarren, so I can make the motion to, for our, say, 31,95- B, paragraph, room number 3B, to accept the donation of $350 from the Blue Ribbon property.
Second.
Okay, motion been made. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Okay, motion carries. And I do have a copy of that check here with us.
Okay.
Alright, we have our first COVID-19 reimbursement grant money. The check was for $2,246.64. And that's good to finally get that back in. There's a lot of paperwork to get that amount of money, but it's take care of our taxpayers like we said we would, I guess.
I had discussion with Lynn regarding that. I was happy to get that. But our next, we're submitting for more reimbursements.
Uh huh.
And supposedly where we've reached a threshold where there's more paperwork involved. Now, as we're getting this, we're gonna get some federal supplementation.
Right.
But the thing is, it's a, it's a mound of paperwork for not a lot of dollars. I wish it was a little the opposite, but yes. But it's just, it's working partners.
Okay, we have the Prime Next Workers Compensation Revised Premium. The town will be getting back $3,649.88. They call it a holiday credit. We can do one of two things. We can either keep that and use it on next year's budget, since they typically go up, or we can get a refund check. What would you gentlemen care to do on that?
Well, in the past, I think we've applied it to the next bill that's coming along, because it was just a lot more simplified.
Yeah.
Rather than getting it back and then...
I thought that would be a way to go by as well. So Lynn, we have consensus on the Prime Next Workers Compensation check to just use it on the upcoming increase with next year.
Okay, I'll put it in the budget here.
Yes. Okay. And the next thing is the continuation from our last meeting. We started the COVID-19 policy. And that policy is something we're doing in case one of our employees come to contact with somebody or gets sick themselves. And we did some corrections this week. We had a good suggestion from Chris Remlart at the police station to add some additional language. I read through his language, and it was using the state site for the policies. And so Lynn revised it, and she's got it all on one page here. And we have that illness policy ready, and we also have the return to work checklist. Did everybody get a chance to review it?
Yeah.
Yeah? I was okay with everything that was revised on here, and I think it covers us. Does anybody have any other input?
I know it's, you follow the same policies going on everywhere else. They wanna know when you traveled, if you traveled out of state beyond, you know, the state's pension.
Beyond, yeah.
Or if any, if you had contact with anybody coming in from out of state.
Yeah.
Over people. So Lucy, are those the good questions to ask, to make sure everybody's safe?
Right, and I think it was, I think it was well written with those additional language and stuff. I wanted to make sure that maybe our potential expiration date, say, this fellow remained in effect until rescinded, following guidance from the governor's office by the Select in the future. And so I wanna have a clause reminders that we have revisited. It's not, it's, and, for example, when the vaccine comes out, we may wanna have an end date, because we don't really need this policy as much. So...
Well, it is, it is just a COVID-19 policy, so in case it spreads back up in another year, so when some small cases come up, it'll always be here. I don't know if we need to...
Okay, I just wanna make sure we have a consider, at least a sunset clause to it.
I don't know how the other select, well, we review our policies, it looks like, every year.
You want to make it effective January 1st, 2022? And then review it then, in case they make changes?
Oh no, we need to make it effective right now.
No, no, I mean, until January 1st, until 2022.
Or resi, or to rescind by this letter.
Right.
I don't think it hurts to even have it in there in 10 years if they wanna take it out, because COVID-19 no longer exists, but I don't think it hurts.
I agree on that. It could happen again. You got small batches or...
And then the town would be covered by...
Or sheltered, you know. The only difference might be, depending on what you pick out for, because I made a copy of this too, because this is a new...
Yeah, that's what Chris used, wasn't he?
Can I just throw something out there? The vaccination is due to come out between October and January somehow. Once the vaccination comes out...
Possibly.
Possibly. I think it's, this policy would have, would, it's gonna be basically changed by the governor, because we're not gonna give, someone doesn't, say employee refuses to get the vaccination, and he gets COVID. Say, let's just say get the flu. You get the flu, we don't give two weeks off with salary for flu if he refuses to get the flu shot. So I, this is gonna be, it's gonna be until, and that's why I really think it's gonna be reviewed.
Why don't we just put it on here, subject to review every year?
Well, subject to review with, following guidance from the governor, or the state, the state of New Hampshire.
I think that's something we have to do on our own. Anybody still?
Okay, because you may not have this, this Families First Act that they passed more recently. That may not be in effect, and I was reading the responses that we've gotten, and most communities have been using, people have either used sick time or any paid time they had when they were restricted, other than, again, other than long-term care facilities, which ended up being able to validate that they probably got COVID from taking care of the elderly.
Right.
And so they went on workers' call.
I did, I did call in today, spoke with Joe Murray, and Lynn did a legwork for me and asked the New Hampshire Municipal Association if we did need to pay our employees for the two weeks, and the response came back, yes, we do.
Right, because of this, right. Because you're getting reimbursed after the fact from the federal government.
Yeah, I agree.
So, so, you know, and I, I'm all in favor of that, you know, but if you look at the way it was originally set up, where the response from the attorney was mostly in its valids, you had to use up that time first, you know, that would be, and it's, oh, I don't know that instead of, but that would be probably the way we would might wanna look at it versus, now they're getting paid, so it really doesn't make a difference. The impact isn't on the town's budget.
Right, but once, as you said, once it dries up, it's gonna be a different story.
Right. If they don't re, if they, if this has a sunset date, and they don't reenact something correct, you know, then, then we have...
Challenge.
Challenge.
So this is the exception to the rule as way our personnel plan is currently written, is what you're saying, Bob? Because our current personnel says that you have to use sick time, leave time, vacation, whatever.
And actually, and actually, when, when you're looking at what the response was from the attorney, it fits into what's going on. Now, what was going on out there? Now, this is new enough that I think there's some communities that aren't gonna realize it until somebody lets them know that this is going on.
Correct.
Whether it's municipal association.
Yeah.
But, because, I mean, they keep making adjustments. You're even looking at the new stimulus plan, and how it's gonna be created.
Well, we don't, we don't have to amend it per se, but the thing is, I just wanna make sure that what Wildcraft is a good point, is once it drops, we may wanna revisit it, because we may be incurring expenses for the town, which we don't need.
Well, why don't we just keep an eye on it as a board, I think? So I'll make a motion that we adopted to our employee policy, the Town of Dunbarren Employee COVID-19 Illness Policy, as written here that we have a final draft of. And the motion should also state that the current Select Board will follow this policy. And when the guidelines from the federal government, or state, or state guidance programs get dropped, then we'll also drop this policy as well, or portions of the policy for the reimbursement.
And one of the good things with this piece of legislation is the fact that top timers actually benefit from this.
Right, right. Which, which, which is contrary to our personnel plan, but it's a good thing.
Right.
Okay, so motions been made?
I'll second.
Mike seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So motion passed. Okay, that takes care of our general items.
Can I just ask one question?
Yep.
Except I was wrong for a second. The COVID-19 grant reimbursement, the board decided anything about those funds?
And we decided, when you came back in the room, Lynn, when we were...
Oh no, we did not decide on that, okay? Can I just make a comment to the governor?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's a small amount of money. We could, we could have a, one of our finance person people break it down and give a few dollars here, a few dollars here, and break it down on the permits. With this small amount of money, why don't we just put it in the general fund for, until the end of the year? Because if any department runs up short, they're gonna have to come to us regardless. This is not a make or break.
I, I agree.
Lucy, just put it in the general fund.
My money's so small, it's fine.
So, I think we have to make the motion to accept the money anyways, right?
Well, I think by signing the grant, you guys have already accepted the total funds to receive those, but where this is just such a small portion of that, acknowledging it on your meeting minutes is important for our audience.
Which we do.
Yeah, and then what you decide to do with it is another piece that the audit always look for, so...
And why don't you make a motion that affects?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that COVID grant money or reimbursement, so we receive from the state and federal level, be inserted into the general fund.
And I'll second that.
Motion made. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay. Thanks for bringing that up, Lynn. We've gone with the left portion, I think. Okay, now mailbox items we have to cover. The first item here is just a follow-up, which we just talked about, the legal inquiry made to the Municipal Association, and we'll get that answered back. The second thing we have here on the mailbox items, there was a change order in here for the Town Hall Structural Renovations. The change order was $1,868. I signed this change order, we spoke about a few weeks back. This is for the environmental, environmental testing, some tin ceiling modifications, and one revised bracket. Pretty, pretty small note with the original contract attached. We have an email here, and it's also posted on Hot Topic for anybody that wants to follow up on it, from Clem Madden, which is the Chair of the School Board on their reopening plans, their updated plans as far as July 23rd, updated plans for reopening, part of the SAU 67 community. So these are draft plans, and they say they're gonna change it, probably they open, and they give a bunch of different scenarios here. But it is posted on Hot Topic, so somebody will start researching. Okay, I went on, I think it was Wednesday night, to the Town Hall Restoration Committee meeting. It was discussed there that their plan should be in this, the 1st, 1st of August, so they can start looking at plans. They're gonna try to attend both of our upcoming elections and show a proposal design, and try to get some responses back from the public. There was some talk about maybe bringing this proposed addition to the, on a warrant article. And there was also some additional talk, if the Select Board would be interested if they didn't bring it as a warrant article. This year, if things felt too tight with the COVID-19 and the tax adjustment that people will be seeing on their property taxes, if we might do a capital improvement and set some money aside for them for this on a warrant article. So there was just some ongoing conversation to that. I brought up the fact that all of the work was completed at the top, the structural work in the Town Hall, and we only had the company broom clean it, because it was pretty dirty when they first went in there. And I asked if they wanted to do some cleaning up, because we had the dumpster out there, or if they wanted us to hire somebody to come in and clean that second floor of the building. They volunteered as a group to clean it. They already started, I believe, today, and they went through and cleaned, and they spoke with the librarian over there. All of the stuff that was packed up there was non-functional, that was not being used, that was craft items from the previous librarian. They went through, they checked everything that they would use, and since we had that dumpster, they got rid of a bunch of stuff there.
Probably doesn't count in records.
Nope.
There was a lot of stuff that's been moved back and forth several times, so...
Yeah, so they're supposed to be neatening it up, cleaning it, dusting it, kind of mopping up the floor, so I said, you know, you're bringing people up to show them, you know, what might be potential, if it's pretty dirty, and so they took the bull by the horns and cleaned that up.
I just wanna add is you probably had the right crowd, because when we had different people up there, where I was trying to move stuff around to make one room available, is, oh, don't throw this out, oh, don't throw that out. So having somebody there that just wants to get rid of some of the stuff that isn't functional...
But they did ask, I made sure they didn't throw out any older pictures or anything from the timeline up there. So there's no records being thrown out, no, no wood for the wainscoting that was taken off the wall. So...
And some of those different, different blocks that remained, different things.
I believe they were craftings that the previous librarian used when the school came in, and they were no longer being used, so they got rid of a lot of that stuff. Okay.
Some of that I just mentioned in the minutes, I don't really have to...
Yes.
People can read the minutes on the website. I do post them for...
Oh, you do?
...for our project.
Okay, great. Alright. We have an email here that was sent in from a resident on Tenny Hill Road that was complaining about some runoff water along the edge of the street. Thought it was going down into the Brook, but it actually was just ending up on the, on the neighbor's land, and so we have addressed that somewhat, and the road agent has made aware of it. One other complaint in here, it was in reference to the 200, or 200, $2.50 registration that we get paid back for the plate stickers. The complainant didn't realize that money comes back as revenue to the town. He thought it went to pay the town tax collector, which it does not, so that's been addressed. We have an email here from the Town Moderator. As far as the Republican Party, they did not respond, so by August 1st, we'll have to provide some names. So we have a little over a month to do it for the Republican Party.
I did provide two names. Lynn, I received one name, not for the general, for the general election, not for the primary, for one Republican. And I provided two Republican names, personnel and chief, kinda like, did not like the names of the people I selected. She was looking for maybe others. But I think those two names still stand, and the thing is, it's, I give them to Randy as the Town Moderator, and he's gonna have to make an element decision.
Okay. Alright, so there, there's a notice in there asking us to do that, because Democrats got them.
It's a little difficult to find seasoned ballot clerks. Where I seasoned ballot clerks are all the ones that have been doing it for years.
Right.
They're of an age, so...
By the way, to put the record on, the, the three names, which I, which we identified, are all relatively new.
We have, on the next item on the agenda, the New Hampshire Secretary of State's Office has ballot marking printers. If we can use that printer as just a printer in our Town Hall's office, they're willing for us to be able to keep it, cannot be used for personal use. It has a, they are giving us new printers, and I didn't have any problem with keeping the old printer. If you guys are okay with that, I'll go ahead and sign that form, so we keep the old printers as backup.
She gave you the model on the back of it. She, she went, she scored different models there. She wrote it on the back of it, I'll play that.
Oh, I see. That's the one I gotta sign, huh?
You got it.
Huh? Looks like this second one, I don't know, the number was very close. Couldn't be easy, huh?
I'll sign them all, I'm gonna...
It's an O D. I don't know if that's a simple etrap in this pitch. I'll sign the bottom one here. Mr. State Farm?
Okay, it's, you, 23rd, yeah.
I'm gonna do both of these. Once we're close, okay? Okay. Lynn has been good enough to give us our second quarter expenses and revenues, like we like to see. These reports show the amount of money that we actually budgeted, how far we are in the expenses, shows the revenues we've received to date. And you can see in the transfer station that we have not received many revenues on that construction debris, and...
Right, just this first week, he got his first $500 in.
Right. So that section's pretty noticeable on there, and everything else, I think, looked about like it normally should this time of year so far.
Yeah, I didn't notice that.
I put it in after you, but I did send it to you electronically.
Okay.
If you wanna review it tonight, you have questions, you can...
Thank you.
They seem like we had some clarity from a lot of the clearing the pine golf course, those trees.
Right.
And that was helpful.
We have an update in here from the transfer station.
If I could, I'll look at one thing, so you talked to about there.
Yeah, go ahead.
You talked about the solar panels having some cracks, and we've had a problem with...
In the base.
In the base. We've had a problem with too many people talking to Green State Solar. And we have the Building Inspector, we have Woody, who's a, who's a resident of the area, and we have Dana Luvoy. We had a meeting this week of the Energy Committee, and I asked Dana, he's gonna pursue a meeting between Mike, Woody, and they're gonna get all their concerns delineated, and Dana Luvoy is the point of contact with Green State Solar. We don't want anyone else talking to Green State Solar except one person representing the town. So I gave him the direction to move out of that, because he was the original one we identified early to be the liaison.
Okay.
And so that's just a, he's gonna coordinate with Woody and with the Building Inspector and have a meeting in a month.
Yep, so we have that update on heavy cross-training of employees and new positions he has, gathering some pricing on lighting for the parking lot, ventilating the trailer. So those are all items that he, we've been asking him to work on. He has worked on. Okay, Lynn gave us an update here to make sure we sign the reconciliation sheets, the summary sheets, up at the, up in our box here, if we can take a look at those. If you'd like to get those done for the auditor. What's in there, July and December of 2019?
July through December.
Through December.
Yeah.
Okay, I have, just a couple of things I'm gonna do in the mailbox item. The fan stand had been, the work has been completed. One thing I didn't, I wasn't made aware until after they did, I believe they replaced five posts.
I thought, they didn't always say four.
Four. They had done three before. We should have done the fifth one, because we have, now have only one original post. The original posts were concrete filled, believe it or not. So had I known about that earlier, I would have told them, go ahead and do the last post. So we'll probably get a call in a year or so to do the last post, but it is what it is. Right now, it's all updated and everything looks good over there, but I wasn't made aware until afterwards, so...
Did they change the, that broken box?
I do not know, but I don't know. I'd have to check that.
The box that was broken.
If it's on the post that they replaced, I would imagine.
Yeah, I wonder if they, they did some work back.
You can check that out, though, Lynn.
Yes, they do, yeah.
And one, the other item was, I already spoke about, the Dunbarren Historical...
Awareness, historical awareness?
Historical awareness, I don't know if that company got it there. Dunbarren. I don't know your code on hand, but anyway, the Dunbarren Town Hall Restoration Committee did the cleanup on the second floor. I don't know if...
Oh, that's not what you said earlier. You said in historical awareness. I said I sure was in historical awareness, you said, yeah.
Maybe I did, but I was wrong.
Isn't this, okay, it's the end of restoration.
Okay. If I did, I apologize. Okay, that's it for the mailbox items. I'm gonna bring it to public comment. I assume we have a new person with us here.
Yes, sir. I give to, what can I say? Bitch.
Oh.
My pond.
Yeah.
It's full of silt right now. Full of freaking silt.
So you got runoff.
Oh my God, David.
Just for the record, this is Ed Wooton speaking.
Oh, sorry, yes.
That's okay, just for the recording.
Yes.
And Ed Wooton, you live on what road?
15G Drive, Dunbarren.
G Drive, okay.
My pond, and you see, you go down, if you leave here and you go down there right now, you'll see it, gutted, out of that fight.
Yeah, I saw it on the way here, I saw it.
I was like, oh my God.
I told you, I blocked mine off, because I knew it was gonna happen again. I was right down into my pond, and I blocked it off this time, so I'm gonna get it. You got it the last time, Ed.
Oh, it's worse now.
Yeah, I saw it.
It's worse now. The last time it wasn't so bad, but this time, it's like...
And I will say that I did contact the owner of the property where I believe most of the runoff was coming from. Some maybe coming from different properties, but I saw the majority of it.
That whole road is like that.
Yeah.
I never ever had this, I never ever...
Pushed off by the book.
We gave you four freaking rain buckets.
Yeah, I saw it going by there.
So, so anyway, I contacted the homeowner.
Yeah.
That owns that property, and he had done a lot of roadwork up towards that Brook area, and he went in there and did... And um, he went in there and did put in some silt fencing, he told me, and he brought some rocks in there to, to try to alleviate it. He's trying to seed it down and maybe hang it. I don't know if he's done those yet, but um, just to make you aware of it, the Conservation Commission's been aware of it now, the um DES is aware of it as well as Fish and Game. And so you're not the only one that has complained about.
Can I make a suggestion? If you, hay ain't gonna do nothing, but what it should do, because I've been in this predicament before, is you do mat it. It's the hay with the, on the mat, that will hold back all that freaking dirt.
Well, I think the DES will probably make recommendations.
Or put silk sock in front of the silt fence.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, if you have runoff like that, and if I ran into that, we ran into that problem before, I'm doing what I did.
You know, I did, I did a um, I did kind of a courtesy call to him to, you know, give him a heads up that we had complaints up, up at the town level. Ask him if he'd do something and he did seem, he did seem like he wanted to take responsibility and do some, you know, whatever he could to alleviate that problem. And I would imagine DES, I, they're gonna be all over the state, because I saw probably ten dry when he's washed down on my way here. So I imagine with these downpours, in fact, I heard on the news tonight, it was four hundred gallons per minute was the rate it came down this afternoon.
Well, we knew it would come in another hour.
Right, so I would think DES is gonna be reaching out to him very shortly because the residents have called him as well as um.
Conservation.
Conservation Commission.
It wouldn't hurt to let the Conservation Committee know, so they can prod DES a little bit, because they do know, but it'd be nice to.
Where do I, where do I, where do I?
Um, Brett St. Clair is the chair and he's right in the book.
Yeah.
So if you wanna give him a call, it wouldn't hurt to let him know that, you know, there's a second pond now that's getting affected.
Oh, I told him that before.
Right.
I told him about his pond.
But like you said, hearing it from somebody else.
But what happens is, you know, I understand it here, is he's talking about one section of the Brook that he fixed. And I blocked the whole thing and it's whole road is like that until you get past the Brook.
Right.
The whole road is like that because where he pushed off, he pushed off in piles on the edge of the Brooks and when it rains, water's all that down into the Brook. So that whole road was still in really bad. And I just, I took pictures of his pond last time also and yours was still in after last time, you know?
Well, my neighbors, all my neighbors were down there and they all took pictures of it and everything else. My Jim, the guy who lives closest to the pond, has from the last one, since the water stopped, he went down inside it because it dried out and actually took a picture of the inside of the pipe. And the inside of the pipe has at least three inches of freaking silt inside of it. And I mean, we cleaned it out, but I don't, who knows how much silt it's gonna have in it this time of year.
My suggestion would be to contact.
I'm just worried about the uh, the fish and the, and the turtles and everything else.
Not to mention, that's, that's the one that was.
I have a lawn and, we have a lawn and, I mean, a lawn.
Just as a, as a select board, we can, you know, bring it to that homeowner's attention, but we really, our jurisdiction is gonna be limited to the DES.
Yes, yes, that's what I was gonna say. My suggestion then is to get in touch with DES and the Conservation Commission.
I'd have to get in touch with them. Plenty of practice doing that.
Okay.
Because uh.
I just wanted to bring this all to your attention. That's all I wanna do.
Yeah, I was thinking, I saw that when I was leaving.
All right.
Get some roads so that.
Yes.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you very much for your cooperation.
All right, no problem. All right, anybody else for uh public comment? And I'm gonna bring it back to the town administrator.
I'm going, I'm just for your permission, we are in the middle of our audit there. Because of this COVID-19, it's requiring a little bit more of a work responsibility on our part where we have to take their.
Yeah.
Audit selection and scan everything to them through a secure website, so it's an ongoing journey for myself, trying to get through it.
And are we done with the appeals? Do you don't quit?
I think this is the, this week is the last of it. I know that there, there might be a couple of um inquiries with just minimal changes, but they're getting ready to finalize those numbers and they will present them to the board assesses for acceptance, yeah.
Okay, thank you, and I'll bring back the board. I'll bring back the board. Uh, Bob, do you have anything this week?
No, I just got free, it's uh, eight to the days.
Actually, okay, let that go and Mike, do you have anything?
I do. The thing is, um, the chief talked to me this week about uh the dog situation.
He just won't let us get out early.
He's about fifty dogs, and he contacted the state. They, they were in somehow in the court system. We're the first community to bring this up because everything's been at a standstill. So he's waiting on the courts to make a decision. He's using some administrative support from Lee's office, I've just lectured, to basically help him put it, put the, his paperwork together. And that's from the police chief. Second thing is um, uh, energy committee, just that uh, the last month that we got from the transfer station was a record month, another record month. So we made a few dollars this month on the uh, on the, we made our payment and they've made a few dollars. So it's been, it's a win-win uh on solar panels. And that is, I told you about the meeting they're gonna have, they're talking about the concrete and all that kinda stuff. They're gonna talk about that and Dana Luvoy is the spokesman for the town.
Mike, can you make sure those rocks on the right-hand side, I know there was some use, or some talk about some use there, but it really looks like six-inch gravel rocks on the lawn, right after the transfer station that we're gonna be plowing into.
Okay.
I'd like that side cleaned up, whether we do it ourselves or they do.
At the road, at the entrance.
Uh, no, it's at, it's right after the transfer station building on the right-hand side on their lawn.
Recycling building you're talking about?
Yeah, there was talk of them doing something with that. I just can't understand, they're just sitting there on the lawn edge and we're mowing our hoidem.
Wait, I'll, I'll talk to Woody about that.
Okay.
Okay, and I think that's all I have. I'm trying to make it quick.
All right, I think that's all I have this week. I've already brought in the also, um, individually commotion to return, so. All in favor?
Aye.